It's 5:15, like to call this regular meeting to order. Like to recognize everybody that's in the audience tonight. Would you please stand and recite the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving into school board norms. Gail, would you like to read those?
Sure will. The board developed norms are to share and respect varied opinion and speak with a united voice once a decision has been reached; to prudently prioritize resources in a student-centric manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan; to exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings and a commitment to board education; to commit to assessing board effectiveness to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and community of Jamestown.
Thank you. Moving on to public communications, we have one. Shannon Hagan, if you'd like to come forward to the mic.
Hello, am I on? Do you hear me?
I don't hear you.
Do I have to turn it on?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Shannon Hagan. I've spoken before, but I'm here again tonight for just a couple of things. I did not realize we were having some recognition, things like that, so I'll be quick. First of all, I just want to thank all of you, all the board members, the teachers, administration, everybody who has worked really hard this year to keep our kids in school and keep them safe and all of those things. We started at the beginning of the year, full-time elementary, hybrid, high school and middle school. You know, at that time, there was, when the decision for hybrid was made, I believe there was like two active cases of COVID in Stutzman County. We learned pretty quickly, I think, that the kids belong in school. We need them in school. Schools are safe. This is really what's best for them. And we moved towards that pretty quickly. Got the high school, middle school, and school. Even as the COVID cases were rising in Stutzman County and our state, really in the whole U.S., we made the best choices for the kids. And that's what I'm asking you guys to do today is, you know, there's, we know so much more now. School's safe. The kids are safe. We know, there's been study after study showing that they, you know, don't readily transmit COVID, that they, you know, aren't really affected by it. They get sick, yes, that happens. But influenza has proven to be more deadly to kids than COVID has. And I think it's time we continue to move forward and do what's best for the kids. And Governor Burgum, as you guys know, just rescinded the emergency orders, got rid of the close contact quarantine. So two things, I'm asking the school to acknowledge those orders and to do the same. I think we quarantined a lot of kids for close contact who didn't need to be, that never... I did ask, I had emailed you guys and asked for the numbers as far as how many kids actually went on to test positive that were quarantined. I'm sure that that number is very, very low. Kids have been quarantined multiple times. Kids who have had COVID have been quarantined for close contact. So with the governor rescinding those orders, I'm asking that you do as well. And we can keep these kids in school where they belong. I'm certain that if we were to look back at the grades from, well, the beginning of 2019, '20, and this year, they have dropped substantially, I would assume. Because my own A students aren't A students anymore. Anyway, schools are safe. Facts over fear, that's all I'm asking you guys to do. As far as the masks, I would like them to become optional. I think a lot of parents would. If we could get rid of that close quarantine problem, which I think was a lot of the issue with the masks and why we kept them on. But if that's no longer an issue, we need to get these off of our kids. We have seen, we've heard multiple people talking, multiple psychologists, child therapists, how harmful these are to them. They're filthy. I mean, I don't, if you guys have elementary kids that see them come home, my kids get new masks every day. They're disgusting. And they're keeping these on their faces all day long. This is a decision, really, that should be up to parents. This is a medical device that you are really forcing our children to wear without our consent. And I would like that to go. Vaccines widely available now. If anybody, obviously, I'm sure, has one, if they want to get one. If they don't, I don't need to know which teachers are vaccinated, students, what have you. It's none of my business. It's none of anybody's business. But if they want one, they can get one. That's the main thing. I have here a list that I had to move on to the back of schools in North Dakota that currently have masks as recommended, not mandatory. And I just want to give you that list. Litchfield Marion, Lisbon, Sergeant Central, Oaks, Lamoore, Bismarck, Mandan, Williston, Kildare, Carrington, Pingery, Buchanan, Medina, Grapton, Cullum, Barnes County North, Wadford City, Southheart, Tioga, Stanley, Washburn, Richardson Taylor, Drake Anamoose, New Rockford, Kindred, Fesiden, Harvey, Bowman County, Berthold, Kidder County, Max, Newburg, Underwood, Velva, Shiloh and Bismarck, I guess, never required masks, Center, Flasher, Light of Christ in Bismarck, Trinity Elementary and High School in Dickinson, Victory Christian School right here in Jamestown, South Prairie and Minot, Central Valley, Wilton, New Salem, Napoleon, Our Redeemer's Christian School in Minot, Hebron, Maple Valley in Tower City, Glen Olin, Botno, Lynton, Wishick Rugby, Maddock, Ray, Lakota, Powers Lake, Divide County, New England, Elgin, and Midcota, I know, have dropped the mandate for masks. A lot of these schools didn't have, only required the masks maybe when the state mandate was on. Some really didn't enforce it all year. And some are, as you know, are just coming off of that requirement. There are schools in South Dakota that haven't had masks all year. Clearly, we know how the media works. If there was a problem, it would have been everywhere. It's time to let the parents decide what's best for their children. I just have one other thing.
Can it be, excuse me, can it be quick? I mean, we're approaching the five minutes, so...
I'm just reading this for somebody else. Toby Churney asked me, I do not know her personally. She, I know, has emailed this to you, but I really do think it's an important letter, and I will read it quickly. She asked me to read it tonight for you all. Dear school board members, I'm writing you today really to ask, really to beg you to unmask our children. It is time. It's been one year since this all started, and it has proven that the virus does not affect children. We talk all the time about our children's social and emotional well-being. Well, it's time to let them be kids again, to let them play together, to take the masks off so that children can see their teacher smiles or see the other kids smiling. Children who are learning facial cues can start seeing those faces. These kids need to be kids again. In case all of you don't know, I know-
Are you listening? You haven't looked once, and you've got your phone in your hand.
This is very important.
Bob? If the audience can please be quiet when we're... Please continue.
In case all of you do not know, I know a couple of you do, but my husband and I both got COVID-19. He ended up in the hospital for 47 days, 32 of those days on a ventilator. We did everything right. We masked up, we social distanced, we did curbside, everything. We were vigilant wearing our masks. And guess what? It didn't help my husband. He's still got it. We went through a month of quarantine, and my children lost a whole month of school. The doctor in the ICU in Fargo asked me if I knew how my husband got it. I told him no. His statement to me was, "You can wear a mask, you can stay in your house, you can wear a space shuttle suit. If the virus wants to get you, it will find a way." I respect this doctor. He saved my husband along with the help from God. Our children need to be back to normalcy, the need to be back to life as it should be. We voted for you to work for the best interests of our children, so start doing it. They need to breathe the fresh air, not the school lunch that's sitting on the inside of their masks. They are constantly touching their masks, taking them on and off, touching their faces, causing distractions. Our teachers can spend more time teaching our children instead of the constant battle to keep the masks on and on right. My guess is the majority of the teachers are now vaccinated. I don't know for sure. All the people who may write to you about removing the masks, my family should be the most concerned about keeping them on. But we want them off. We are comfortable with the science. And through all of this, I am more concerned with the social, emotional aspect than the virus. I've said this all along. Carrington and Bismarck are removing the masks from the kids. There is no more mask mandate in town. So step up and do the right thing for our children and for the teachers that want the masks gone also. Start listening. So on May 3rd, let's let these kids have the rest of the school year, and next school year, to see the smiles from their teachers and their friends. Let them play. Let them be kids. Every day, my kiddos come home from school asking when this is going to be over, when they don't have to wear masks anymore. They can't come talk to you, but I am their voice. Please, I am begging, take these masks off our children. This is from Phillip and Toby Churney. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Moving on to letter D, is there any conflicts of interest to declare? Bob? From, yep. Okay, so you're just abstaining from voting at the time then? Moving on to consent agenda, any motion, motion to approve? Motion by Bob, second by Heidi, any discussion? Hearing non, assuming roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving into our regular meeting, we have recognition. Melissa's going to call each group. Anyway, if you're, she's going to have each group come up, and we'll have a presentation and then move to the next group. So when your name is called, if you'd please come forward.
Life Smarts. The Jamestown High School 2020 Life Smarts team won the national championship on Monday, April 19th, 2021. The event was postponed to 2021 due to the coronavirus pandemic. The Jamestown team had won the Indy Life Smarts to advance to the national event, which was held virtually. The team members were Garrett Wright, Jesse Paulson, Chris Saylor, and Jaren Larson. Marcel Krieger is the Life Smarts advisor. Onto drama, and I believe that the Life Smarts team is not able to be here tonight due to a conflict. So drama, the high school one-act play, A Simple Task, won Class A state championship. The cast members were Logan Rossmatter, Emma Willie, or Wiley, I'm sorry if I mess up some of your names here, Olivia Sriok, Zoe Bennett, Ian Weiss, Anya McDermott, Daniel Nyland, Dominique Scobie, and Rebecca Krieger. The director was Anthony McIntyre. Zoe Bennett and Ian Weiss received Outstanding Performer. Onto speech. The WDA champions are Madison Matzenbacher for... Sorry, Persuade, I think is what she did there. Logan Mader for Serious Prose. Paris Decoom for Radio, thank you. Ian Weiss for Humorous Interpretation. Do we want to do all speech together?
Why don't you do State Champions?
And onto the State Champions, Anya McDermott, Serious Prose. Ian Weiss and Anya McDermott for Serious Duo. Madison Matzenbacher, Informative. Kelly Rinwick, Entertaining. Ian Weiss for Humorous. The Seastand Allstate, oh, do you want to take the picture with that person? Then the... The Seastand Allstate is Ian Weiss, Weston Walker... Weiss, is it Weiss? Sorry, I apologize. Ian Weiss, Weston Walker, Dawson Me, Gavin Hout, Madison Matzenbacher, Kelly Rinwick, Anya McDermott, Logan Mader, Outstanding Speaker, was Ian Weiss. Advisor is Laura Weiss, and Assistant is Chantel Har. Onto chess. The high and middle school chess club participated in the North Dakota State Scholastic Chess Tournament on April 24th, 2021 in Bismarck. Jamestown placed second in the team division for both middle school and high school. Freshman David Solomonov, I believe is how he's pronounced it, placed second in the high school individual division, so close to being able to represent North Dakota at the National Scholastic Chess Tournament. He won four out of the five chess matches played and was the most, had the most victories at the state chess tournament by any Blue Jay. Congratulations to the chess leads. The middle school participants were Jacoby Jasmine, Hoyt Paul, Peyton Soma, Syri... Sorry, I'm sorry, Syria, Peterberg, Katie Ryan, Ben Schultz, Jamison Corstens, Cash Burley, Charles Leibold, Eli Olsen, Ellis Wolf, Atticus Tretschler, and Grady Joseph. The middle school advisor is Mrs. Anna Denault. The high school participants are Zach Holben, David Solomonov, and Josiah Reimers. High school advisor is Mr. Jacob Denault. Onti Choir and Orchestra. I'm going to do choir and orchestra together, and then I guess if they want to separate into choir and orchestra once they get up there for a picture, but we'll just go down the list. The following students were selected for North Dakota Allstate, which was held in Bismarck on March 20th and 21st. Annika Tweetin, Choir. Maddie Tyson, Choir. Ciara Saylor, Choir. Anya McDermott, Choir. Kendra Dawson, Choir. Marin Rasmussen, Choir. Paris Nikum, thank you, Choir. Cameron Edwards, Choir. Kayden Schmidt, Choir. Mathias Brusier, Choir. And Kimberly Weens, OBO. The following students received star ratings at State Music. Maddie Tyson Orchestra and Choir. Sarah Sletto Orchestra. Joel Bowman, Choir. Kendra Dawson, Choir. Emily Hoff, Choir. Micah Hoek, Choir. Malika Kramlich, Choir. Zach Lund, Choir. Michael Mahoney, Choir. Anya McDermott, Choir. Grace Nabagi, Choir. Paris Nikum, Choir. Ciara Saylor, Choir. Ian Weiss, Choir. Jaslyn Wick, Choir. Kimberly Weens, Choir. Kayden Eslick, Choir. Riley Johnson, Choir. Preston Craber, Choir. Dawson Me, Choir. Tyler Spanner, Choir. Annika Tweetin, Choir. Weston Walker, Choir. Ryan Wells, Choir. Colin Conway, Choir. Lilian Cordell, Choir. Gabby Tweetin, Choir. Becca Willer, I'm assuming these are also choir. Janay Bernice, Choir. Monica Riplinger, Choir. Emily Ahmet, Choir. And Sonia Saylor, Choir. So, we'd also like to recognize Cheryl McIntyre in recognition for the contribution to the choir program. Thank you for your commitment to the students and the Jamestown Public School District. Want to come up and get your certificate, Cheryl? I'd also like to congratulate Award of Excellence to Jennifer Michalenko for contribution to the orchestra program. Could we have it quiet out there, please? To the orchestra program. Thank you for your commitment to the students and the Jamestown Public School District. So thank you, Jennifer Michalenko.
Thank you, Melissa, for going through all those names. Moving on to B, is there any correspondence? We have none. Moving to reports, superintendent report, Rob?
Thank you. You have my written report. And a big chunk of this, we're going to go over in a couple different agenda items, so I won't touch on them very much. I know we'll have some lengthy discussion as it goes. But I'll just draw your attention to school nutrition updates. I did provide some information to the board in my report related to lunches in the next year. We know that later on in the agenda, we'll be setting prices. But we also received, for the next year, I should say, but we also received information from the federal level that that extension for the summer meal program will continue again through next year, which means that there'll be no assessment for the hot lunch program for any student again in this next year. I still think it's important that we set prices. Of course, we need, you know, all the carts and additions. Those types of things, we're still going to have to charge for, so we'll need to set those prices anyway. But just to make sure that we're understanding that those 2021, 2022 meal costs will be covered as reimbursable meals next year for all students again. I did include some updates on the UJ shared projects. Of course, I'd be happy to talk on any of that if there's questions related to that. And I did, in my legislative update, provide an update for all of the, you know, now that we have a completed session, all of those areas. One I would draw your attention to that isn't on here that was really kind of a late addition was... Now, I forgot the bill number, is it 1015, which added CTE expansion grant, match grants, which is an opportunity that we'll be looking at a little bit more in-depth in the preliminary ESSER budget. But a really good opportunity to utilize ESSER dollars and enhance what's available in CTE for our students across the district. So with that, I would stand for questions. Like I said, a lot of what I've covered in my report will come up in later discussion.
Any questions right now? Heidi?
Can you talk about the outcome of the legislative bills?
So if you go into my report, really probably the one that draws the most attention is 1388. In 1388, we know that that started at a 1% 1%. It was amended to 00 in the House, added back to 1 to 1 to the Senate. Of course, they didn't concur, so conference committee ensued. And the final on that was a 1 and 1, so about $100 increase in each year of the next biennium on a per pupil standpoint. And I just want to draw, as I did in my written report, to Senator Don Shively, who really did an outstanding job. For those that know Senator Shively, he just does an amazing job supporting education, and we have a great appreciation. Of course, our own representatives and senators were also, of course, great supporters of education. But I wanted to draw Senator Shively's attention because he did, he did serve on conference committee. So I wanted to draw attention to his name as well. 1027, that's the bill that we've been talking about that would limit transportation payments outside of the district. So those bus routes that run outside of a school district would not be compensated in the transportation formula from the state. 1135 is the bill that allowed for competency-based grading to be utilized in the state scholarships, which we think is important. We're happy to see that signed by the governor as well. And with that, if there's, unless there's other bills that you'd like me to cover, I think for the most part, those are the only ones we haven't covered.
Moving on to board education, we have the Arts Partnership, Arts Center Partnership, Mindy, welcome back.
Ask for any better PR. I mean, the Arts Center is in every photo and every kid's Facebook for the next couple of days at least. So thank you, thank you. But yeah, thank you for having me. And I just want to say, first off, an appreciation for the years of a partnership that we've had with the Jamestown Public Schools and the Arts Center. So I'm here to thank you for that. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of an update of what we've been doing at the Arts Center, how we've been sort of maneuvering through this- through this strange year and what we have planned. So I don't think you had the presentation, you'll have to look up there, I guess, so, I mean, okay. So, the Arts Center started with a $500 a year budget, now we're up close to $300,000. We have three full-time and one part-time staff member and we do a lot over there. We have a pretty solid membership base of about 1,000 and this is not true because of COVID, but we do have quite a few visitors a month. This is what's important. In 1984, we began our partnership with the Jamestown Elementary Schools, providing the Artist in Residence Program, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Well, what we do at the Arts Center, this is kind of an interesting picture. I make them, put it in the presentation all the time because I took this job in 19, or 2018, I think it was, Bob? And that's, the first director is Mark Zimmerman, that's, he's my first cousin, and that's my daughter Madison and the yellow hair, who's a junior, so that should just tug at your little heartstrings there, right? Oh, and then, incidentally, the first day I got the job, I guess it was 2019, the governor's office called and said, hey, you got the governor's award. So, I mean, I think that's a little coincidental, but I had a lot to prove after that, I guess. So the program that we do at the Arts Center is a little bit of everything, as you can see. We do, we have a gallery where every four to six weeks, we have a professional art exhibit in there. Right now, it's very interesting. It's the North Dakota Human Rights Coalition exhibit and it's very striking. It sends a message. It's hard to look at, but what we're not all about, just flowers and animals. We have, you know, things that mean something to everybody and the gallery is always open for free. And we also have our cornerstone, well, I'd say we have two cornerstone projects, but our programs, but our Arts After School. This is for third through sixth grade students here in Jamestown. We provide transportation from school into home if they live in town. It's heavily subsidized by scholarships, which we raise through different fundraisers or that kind of thing, and nobody's turned away. Incidentally, during the pandemic, we did offer Arts After School even last spring. We did some Zoom things. And then this fall, we started right away when school started and we got, the kids were wearing masks and were socially distancing. We limited the number of students. We got the Plexiglas, we did all that and knock on wood, it was, it's been very successful. Now, the Artist in Residence Program, that's why I'm here. It's our oldest program. It started in 1982. We have professional artists that we contract with that come in, they live at the Arts Center. We have an apartment upstairs. They live there with their pets even. We have a dog and a cat up there now and they provide the visual arts education in all elementary schools here in Jamestown. Also part of that program is Linda Roche, who's our Artist in Resident right now. She was part of the mentee program and now she's a full-fledged Artist in Resident with, on the state roster for the North Dakota Council on the Arts. So as I said, it's Linda Roche. She's been with us for three years. This year, she didn't go into the classroom, she did it all virtually, all via Zoom. The best couple, her best residency was right around Christmas time, in my opinion, because that's actually the Arts Center Gallery where she's working at. She brought all of her art pieces down there, she did all of her classes through there and she would show, she, every once in a while, she'd take her computer and she'd do a virtual tour of the whole Arts Center to all these students. And I tell you what, on Saturdays, these kids would bring their parents and they'd buy paintings from Linda. I mean, she was, it was a marketing rock star for Christmas. She was, everybody had a painting from Linda for Christmas, I think, if their kids were. Anyway, so she did, as you can see, she did with K through 1, drew animals, talked about coloring techniques, that kind of thing. 2 through 5, she worked conceptualizing their own characters and did a fabulous job coming up with different traits and details and, so as you can see, she's a professional. And so we decided this year that in the next coming up school year, 2021, 21, 22, that we'd offer Linda contract again. And we did that through, I talked to Mr. Luck about it, I talked to Pat Smith, who's the elementary something, I mean, she's a coordinator or something, anyway, and also some teachers and they said, we love Linda, she's solid, we don't have to worry about her and she always is coming up with different ideas. So we did extend her another contract. A couple of other things we do at the Arts Center, we have summer camps, I've got flyers here for summer camps, we have a theater in the summer. Arts for all ages, we do, we have a class once a week with community options and Triumph. Also, I should tell you, we have the Arts Center across the alley, we have the Hanson's Art Studio, where there's a pottery studio in there and a classroom, and then we also have the Arts Park. We have adult, youth and family classes, a little bit of everything. One of our other cornerstone projects or programs is Art for Life. We get grant through the North Dakota Council on the Arts to do programming for, and our partner is Ave Maria. And this year, that's been very limited because of COVID, but we did do some contracting with Chuck Supi and he went into the, he virtually went into the nursing homes and he did, made story songs from some of these elders in those care facilities. So we're trying to do our best and hopefully now, they actually escaped a couple of weeks ago and came down and toured the gallery, so they were, and you should have seen these guys, they, these little, it was little old ladies is who it was and they, they came off the bus and they were dressed like they'd never gone anywhere before. I mean, they were just beautiful, they had their jewelry on, they were, it was great. Oh, and of course, we have our Hanson's Art Park. And that's where we have the Downtown Arts Market and we're starting that again this summer, starting on June 24th with our First Annual Chalk Fest. We are bringing in eight nationally known 2D chalk artists from Thursday night, Saturday all day, or Friday all day and Saturday all day to do 2D art down in the park and across the street, and the street that's right in front of our building. So we, we're kind of busy. Anyway, I added a few things about the benefits of arts education. It's shown that if there's arts education offered in schools, that students are involved in the arts more time, four more times likely to be recognized for achievement, academic achievement. Four more, four times more likely to participate in math and science fair, school attendance is increased, academic achievement, and three times more likely to be elected to class office, which, that's interesting, anyway. And then this is kind of an interesting slide. The yellow is not involved with arts and the blue is high involved with arts, so. Anyway, that's what I've got. Does anybody have any questions for me or comments or?
Any comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mindy. That was really great and of course, I loved the partnership. I wondered about the Arts in the Park this summer. Are there going to be any restrictions? Are you going to be monitoring that in any way because of COVID?
Well, we had, we had the Downtown Arts Market last year and we, it was socially responsible. I mean, I, we announced every time, you should wear a mask, be socially distanced, that kind of thing. And particularly, and last year, we made the decision with the board that we would do that, we would carry on the activity and people had to have their own social responsibility. And that's what we'll do again this year.
Any other comments or? I'd just like to say that I'm glad you guys didn't move the buffalo down there, so. On a lighter note.
Yeah, that was, that was something. I had a few calls about that. What are you thinking? Some guy came in and he was an older guy and I was upstairs and Sally, she works there, she's the nicest person you've ever met. I'm not that nice. Anyway, this old guy, he came in and he goes, why are they bringing that buffalo down here? That's quite the deal. And she said, well, you do know what day it is, right? And he said, oh, April Fools.
It got quite a few, so thanks for coming, Mindy.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, moving on to the ESSER expenditures, 22 and current, Sally?
In your drive-in, if you would like, I did print out extra if anybody's interested in the printouts, Roger, if you want, I don't know. You know, Dr. Luck and I talked, we thought, we've scrambled and, you know, we have ESSER, we had Ed Core and Resiliency and Broadband. And so to take my world and put it in just a one-page document so that you know, you know, Dr. Luck has done an excellent job of presenting what should be spent with these funds and I think the board should be pleased with what the district has done in a short amount of time and made good use of the dollars. So it's kind of a one-page document and showing the percentage of what was spent where, you know, and so the first category is ESSER funding and that's, you know, that's a fund, currently, we've spent $336,000. It is, there's, it's a $563,878 grant, so my guess, we're still spending money there and my guess is we'll probably have about a $200,000 carryover to look at, to spend in the next fiscal year. And so, and ESSER in the supply area, you know, lots of, obviously, things to sanitize the school and cleaning, you know, and technology, little items for technology like iPad cases. So, you know, what we spent so far, and you can see the first number is the dollar amount, $108,084.09, and this is through March 31st. So 32% of the total ESSER dollars that we spent was spent on that type of item. And going down, you know, equipment, which is cleaning equipment, our Clorox 360s, our floor scrubbers and all the computers, technology. With ESSER funding, we spent $73,000 or about 22% of the funds that we spent to date. We did spend some, you know, the special ed needed, some teletherapy speech, you know, which is a fee and software license, so about 3% in that area of the ESSER funding that we spent to date. And then, as you're aware, you know, in order to bring the food service back whole because of having no, no ability with no school closing in March, there was no ability to earn that extra revenue, so we put the food service back to hold by that $110,000. In the ESSER 1, which is not going to be true in the other ESSER dollars, they did the Title I funding formula, which means private schools got a little piece of the pie. And so just for your, I just put that in there, St. John's expenditures, they had their little, and the district is required by federal law to be the fiscal agent for those expenditures. They did professional development and some cleaning supplies. That is just about their total allocation. They probably have $108 left. So you can see the percentage, that's the percentage of the expenditures that we spent in ESSER, you can see the expenditures of that total.
Sally, Jason's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, to reiterate, that will not be a part of the ESSER 2 or 3, correct? The St. John's?
No, they have separate funding, Ian's, yep. The Ed Core funding, like I said, the board can be pleased with what they decided on the Ed Core funding. As you were, you know, the virtual, the two people that we, we spent it on salary for two people that we reassigned for the Virtual Academy and a new tech position and the social studies position that we had to offer extra contracts to because we were unable, the resignation of that teacher was so late. And then we added an EL position. And then also, the staff was able to capitalize on quite a few training opportunities, you know, Schoology, learning management system, the district offered virtual conferences. Depending upon what area you were in, there might have been counseling conferences, you know, they had the Fall Conference for Educators, which a lot of teachers would go to in person if that was available, virtually. And so the district offered payment to those teachers for, you know, taking those virtual conferences. Some special ed did some behavior tech training and we offered training for, online training for the support staff. So, and then the benefits for those positions listed below, you know, obviously, taxes required and retirement, you can see the cost there. So a large percentage, you know, of the Ed Core was payment for, whether it be salary or opportunities for professional development. Some other things, you know, repairs, we had to do a phone upgrade and more supplies and technology and more supply, more equipment and technology buying computers, okay? So about 22% of that Ed Core was, but a large bulk, you can see, if we add it all up, was, you know, payment for salaries and the ability for staff to get paid for any kind of training that they did. The Resiliency Grant paid for the Virtual Academy, the professional, you know, the services that we had to pay Arizona State. And the other thing we added to our, we have frontline for our staff absences. We added, which we're, you know, getting set up, the online portion for support staff. Dr. Luck spends way too much time signing off leave requests on support staff on a three-part form, so we took this opportunity to do a online system that we're getting, you know, set up in that area. We did repairs to our heating and VAC upgrade so that Jerome does it online and more technology equipment licensed so that we could do Zoom. Obviously, we needed Zoom for meetings and we continue to use that software. So you can see the percentage of each item there and the total of the grant. So obviously, the Ed Core is totally spent, that had to be done by December 30th and Resilience is done and the Broadband is done. The Broadband Grant was for internet connection, so those students that are virtual or at home, we, you know, we have services through Dactel or the state and so that bill was paid through this grant. And this, now this grant is done, so for the last couple of months, we will use the ESSER dollars to be able to pay those last couple invoices.
Heidi, Heidi's got a question.
The Zoom, do you anticipate we'll continue with that licensing or no? No, okay.
So the last portion is all of those grants combined. You know, you can see that salary and benefits and stipend and benefits, you know, about 21% of the total of all those grants was for salaries and professional development opportunities for staff. 26% was for repairs and the internet service, which is the Broadband Grant, consisted of 1%, that grant was $8,558. Our supplies, which is, in a nutshell, technology and cleaning, and if anybody wants to look at the pages and pages in detail, I'll happily print it out. And license, which are fees for software and then our other is just the food service program that we reimbursed. And then our private school, you know, expenses were about 2%. So you can see the percentage and the dollar amount totaled by all of the grants and so $1.4 million. But I think the board can be pleased. It was a scramble and I think Dr. Luck gave you good recommendations. And now we're ready for ESSER 2 and 3. Any other questions?
Any questions, Erin?
Yeah, I was under the impression that the ESSER 1 had a timeframe associated with that. Did you, Sally mentioned a rollover, can you just kind of explain that?
So each of the ESSER programs have a September 30th deadline, so 2023, 2022, 2023 and 2024, correct, in successive order for ESSER 1, 2 and 3? So September of 2023 for ESSER 1, or 2022 for ESSER 21, sorry. 2 is 23 and 3 is 24.
Any other questions for Sally? None? Okay, moving on to old business, any old business? Hearing none, moving into new business, we have nothing under activities or building and grounds curriculum. Moving into finance, letter A is our motion to approve or to submit approval to submit the North Dakota Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program grant. Motion by Gail. Seconded by Jason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Moving to letter B, is our motion to, for the approval of the fee schedule for 21, 22 school year. Motion by Gail. Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Moving to letter C, is our motion for the approval of the school lunch prices for 21, 22 school year. Motion by Greg. Motion by Greg. Seconded by Bob. Any discussion? Heidi?
So what is the change in this? I mean, are we, I mean, I realize it's being paid for, but are we making changes to it? Or did I misunderstand that?
The school lunch prices are set, I don't believe there's a change with those recommendations. Amy?
I believe the elements, you know, lunch meal is 10 cents.
Oh, 10 cents, right.
And then, I think, lunch meal is $1.
And if you remember, there's a calculation that takes place, we don't have a say, because it's getting to a certain equity number that across the nation that they work towards, and when you're below that amount, they simply tell you, whatever the calculation comes out, that's what your price is, and that's the way it has to be.
Any other discussion? Sally?
No discussion, sorry. I just want to make the comment that, you know, Dr. Luck talked about earlier, that the food service, you know, program, obviously, the state said, you know, they're not charging. But to encourage, because, you know, the free and reduced application, even though they get them free, needs to be completed, it affects, you know, federal funding. So, you know, I'm hoping that the word gets out there, you know, that they still complete them, so.
Yep, and I did put this in my report, and I apologize for not touching on it. Our food service did an amazing job with making sure that people continued to file their free and reduced applications. If you look at what occurred across the state, in terms of Title I, which is a pretty significant aspect of funding for us, we were one of the few districts that saw that maintain. We actually grew our allocation, much less maintain, and a lot of that has to do with what they call the poverty factor, and that is driven almost primarily by free and reduced lunch counts. And because our food service staff did such a good job trying to communicate that we need to fill those documents out, that was a significant benefit to us, and we'll see about $50,000 as the preliminary allocation increase for us in Title I this year, is that, that's right, correct? I mean, there's other factors there, too, the feds also increased the amounts there, but that was a big piece. The other piece of that is our state funding formula includes a poverty factor as well, and that impacts us in state funding and in our Title I, so really just want to encourage people to continue to fill out those free and reduced lunch applications, because it has a benefit to people personally, but has a pretty significant benefit to the district in those funding, in those aspects of funding, but also in grant writing, things of that nature. So we've maintained right at that 36%, and if we can get people to continue to do that, or maybe even more people apply, that only benefits the district as well as individual families.
Jason?
So just to clarify, that's one of the main reasons why we have to set these prices, right, for the, for the Title, for the free and reduced portion? I guess I just want to clarify that, we just said that the state for '20 will pick up meals, but we still have to set the prices for, I just think we should let the, you know, the public know what we're setting the prices for.
Good question. Like I said earlier, the, we set the food prices because not everybody, everything is covered under a reimbursable meal, extra milks, if you supersize, or what we call supersizing, that's all additional cost. It's the reimbursable meal that's covered, and that's at the federal level. We still need to set prices, but it doesn't impact the free and reduced lunch numbers, that's still covered by applications. But we need to cover those, so we make sure that we have a number associated, and we do, as I said earlier, have a requirement to increase until we get to that equitable lunch payment.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Moving to letter D, is our motion to, for the approval of the Arts Center Agreement for '21, '22 school year. Motion by Bob. Seconded by Gail. Any discussion? Heidi?
Is this the same also? Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Moving into letter E, is there's a motion for the ESSER budget. Rob, you want to touch on that first?
I do, there's two documents that I'd like to draw your attention to. One is a PDF of a spreadsheet, and I'll talk primarily from my board memo, Board Memo 71, but just to be clear about the Excel spreadsheet, everything that you see in blue is listed as, that could be considered, at least in our preliminary budget, we're still waiting on a lot of guidance at the state level and the federal level regarding ESSER. But everything that's listed in blue, I would consider eligible for learning loss. So we have more than what we consider, what we believe we will need to fall under that learning loss, that 20% learning loss. We have more, as you can see, it's about 1.4 million, and I've targeted about 1.9, almost $2 million devoted to learning loss. And so there's more covered there, and I will go through each of these activities one by one, but I'm just drawing your attention to why those two numbers are different. The number up top is what we would need to have at 20%. The bottom number is what is being projected for learning loss to cover. So I want to draw your attention mostly to my board memo. We have about, almost $7.3 million in ESSER II and ESSER III in our allocation, and as we referenced before, that's spread out over a couple of years, and so some of these activities are being presented to you, and they would extend a few years, the duration of the ESSER programming. I have included them, like I said, that's 7.3 million, it would have to be about 1.4 million to cover the requirement for learning loss. That's really broad. When we think of learning loss, we think of things like tutoring services or extended school year, that's only part of it. Learning loss at the federal level has been defined really, really broadly, and even things like expanding CTE programs, that falls under learning loss. We're still waiting on guidance, like I said, so that's a little looser. We just had a webinar today on ESSER II, so we're still waiting for ESSER III. So it's, some of this is a waiting game, and we're going to continue to work on finalizing this budget, but we did want to make sure our preliminary budget was in front of the board, so we could begin working. Some of these are activities that require us to go out and find counselors, for example. We need to start working on that, so I need a little bit of support in, with getting those approved, so we can move forward in those areas. Again, I'll go through just each of those activities, and I'd be happy to answer questions and fully articulate each of these activities, but I've done them in rank order, what I consider to be my recommended rank order for these. We have talked really ad nauseam related to the opportunity that ESSER provides us from a facility standpoint. We know that there are some facility projects that will be allowed to be embedded within ESSER, and I think there is, as much as we can do, we should be fitting and targeting those dollars for those facilities. So facility projects that are part of our capital projects plan that address COVID supports are the number one priority. And as you can see from the budget, that's about 5.2 million of that allowable expense into building facilities, and that is, those are projects that, if the board approves, will move forward with our Facility Committee and start to target and prioritize each of those activities that will be funded, but that's a responsibility for the Facilities Committee. The second priority, and the third priority tied pretty closely together, but I would like to add an additional counselor to support mental health and behavioral needs. We've talked about this before as well, where we have a pretty efficient system happening right now with some elementary counselors supporting the work at the high school, but that is not the most effective. Our elementary buildings need those counselors full-time, and even sharing that little bit of time creates a little more work for those counselors when they're in their buildings. And like I said, it's not the most efficient way to do that. So this additional counselor at the high school would be four days a week and one day a week at the middle school, and it would allow those elementary counselors to maintain full-time at their elementaries, which I think is very important. As I said, related to that, contracted services for licensed mental health therapy services, we've talked in the past about working with the village, or maybe Ann Carlson Center, or some other agency and contracting some time. We know that there are needs for behavioral health supports for our students. What this would provide is one day a week at each level, one day a week at the elementary level, one day a week at the middle level, one day a week at the high school level, to address those neediest of students in terms of supporting their mental health and behavioral needs through therapy. The fourth priority is the continuation of our additional EL instructor. We, as Sally mentioned in our ESSER overview, one of the targeted areas we had was in ESSER I, was providing more EL services. We know we need to continue to do that, we couldn't not, we would not be able to operate in it with just one FTE, it just, we wouldn't be getting student services, so that has to be a priority for us as well, is to continue that along. In terms of number five, that stipends for a staff development initiative, Sally talked about in ESSER I and our resiliency, and our ed core dollars, we prioritized opportunities for our staff to get that important training that they need, but also honor their time through a financial commitment. This would be an expansion of that idea. All of the board heard TLA presentations that were very robust, very comprehensive, and it really showed the level of work that our teachers do. This would be very similar conceptually to that. I did include a basic overview of what that might look like, but I would caution to say that's not it. There's more that needs to go into that initiative to fully articulate what that would be. That will be a robust and pretty comprehensive opportunity. But I don't want to ask people, you know, I've had some stakeholders come in and help me to develop and further articulate that idea. I don't want to ask them to come back if that's not, and continue that work unless the board is supportive of the concept of these kinds of stipends for these kinds of activities. I feel very, very strongly that it is worth it. I think we will get really outstanding work from people and provide this opportunity, but it is something that is a significant portion of dollars. And so I don't want to ask people to come in and continue to articulate this idea unless it's something that's supported. The next is a learning center coordinator from GHS, and actually, this is a little bit of a shift from general fund dollars. Right now, a recommendation was requested from the high school to transition three paraprofessionals into a learning center coordinator, and I would like to do that, and because it's a new position, we actually could infuse it into our ESSER budget, and I would like to do that as well. Item number eight is the elementary leadership team. Now, this isn't an agreed-upon negotiations item, but I included it in here because it fits, or I think it can fit with a little bit of shifting in very clear direction for those teams. At the high school level and at the middle level, we have staff advisories. We have the site-based leadership team, we have the house advisories that provide guidance and empower teachers in decision-making, and having opportunities to, for teacher agency and voice. The elementary lacks that, and I think it's a criticism that I think is fair, in that we need something there to make sure that we're getting voice from our elementary teachers as well, and so I think there's an opportunity to include that into that ESSER budget as well, at least for the duration of these budgets. The last is specialized educational technology. We've had a lot of technology into our ESSER budgets, and I outlined a little bit of the potential expenses there as well. One point I want to make with the additional counselors to support mental health and behavioral needs, that was priority number two. This position, likely at the end of the ESSER funding, we would need to return to our current FTE. There's sustainability that we need to consider with all of these. That would be my plan right now, is to continue to return back to our current FTE, and we would have to take these three years to examine what those responsibilities are between all of our counselors, prioritize, and that would have to be something we think about. With our facility projects, we know there is a need to sustain those expenses, those are one-time expenses. Just talked about the counselor, that's something that we would have to make a decision on. Right now, the plan would be to return to our current FTE, so that wouldn't have a sustainability piece. Contracted services, I think we need to look at where we're at, at that time, if there is a continued need for therapy services for our students, I think we need to take a look at that. Our EL teacher, that's based on our current caseloads. If we're at the same place we are right now, we have to find a way in our general fund to cover that expense. Again, we simply can't cover it with one person, we have too many students on those caseloads right now. And this is an opportunity for us to bridge that gap right now and reassess. In my first year in Jamestown, I think the number of EL students was 16, and now it's almost triple that. So it's pretty substantial changes in eight years with our English learners. The stipends for staff development, that would be simply within these ESSER funds, and that wouldn't continue after that. The CTE expansion match grants, I didn't talk about those. I think this is, my apologies, this is the one I'm probably the most excited about. This is a true bang for the buck. What the state has set up, and we didn't see it coming, I'm sure the CTE directors did, but I'm sure there was work behind the scenes, but really what this is, is a dollar-for-dollar match. If you commit $500,000, which is what the budget is for this, what the activity cost is for this budget, the state will match that dollar-for-dollar. So if you put in $500,000 in CTE enhancements and programming, that's $1 million that you have to spend. It's a great opportunity, and the state is actually using ESSER to fill that bucket. Their portion of ESSER, they keep some, a certain percentage. I think it's a great opportunity to really do some great work in CTE, and that's really one of my favorite opportunities in here, because we talked about aviation, we've talked about the culinary arts and expanding into the Transition House and addressing that phased approach with our Transition House and getting those culinary programs in there. We've talked about the need for building trades to have an outbuilding to create their projects, a lot of really, really great opportunities, greenhouse, expanding the greenhouse, you know, at the CTE, a lot of really good options here. Again, a dollar-for-dollar match, can't beat it, I think it's a great opportunity. But with that, I would stand for questions, I did provide you a couple-page memo here as well.
Any, Erin?
Yeah, just as you stated, you know, the concern with hiring staff with temporary funds, I just, could you just kind of describe the current environment as far as turnover? How likely would we be able to rely on attrition to address that versus a RIF?
Well, it's always hard to say. You're absolutely right, Erin, we need to be cautious with these dollars, at least go in fully aware, when you're looking at staff, what's the long-term plan? Like I said, it's tough to say, Erin, if people will retire or not, but that would be always the hope, that you're looking for attrition first. And is that possible? Yeah, it's absolutely possible, but we don't know that. The idea, though, would be, in that priority, would be to get back to the current FTE, that would be the plan. And with all of these other areas, with staffing, the other area with staffing is the EL, that's something we're using ESSER to bridge the gap right now. Regardless of ESSER, that has to be an expense, so we're actually benefiting our general fund right now by using ESSER for that cost, because that's going to be a cost regardless. But the one that I think we need to be additionally cautious on is the counselor, because our intention has to be to get back to our current FTE, reassess what our needs are, or make that financial commitment after three years and say, this is what we absolut- that financial commitment after three years and say, this is what we absolutely have to have. But my intention would be to move back to three FTE.
Heidi?
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I was, I had, was, had the same comments as Aaron summarized. I just, I think these are, I like the idea of being able to use these funds in a way that makes sense and, and, you know, I would prefer if we were to make a change back to go, you know, use attrition for that. I'm very excited about the match grants and just using, and I don't know if there's a cap on that, but it just would be interesting to, you know, if we get a, get a match, anytime we get a match, that sounds good to me. So from a financial standpoint, just the sustainability, I guess, of, of these, of these options that we have is, would be a concern, not knowing our future funding and
The, the actual, I'm not sure what the cap is, but the minimum is 500,000. That's why that amount is at 500,000. So that's the minimum. They, like I said, they have a cap, but it's really pretty high. The other, outside of the counselor, the, the other positions are either ones we have to fill or we're, we're really saving general fund dollars. You know, like the learning center coordinator, that's a position we can use, like I outlined in my memo, a few different ways. There's an opportunity for us to use that special education technician. And if we do that, that's a lesser cost. Or we can look at hiring a general ed teacher that has an interest in special ed, and they can then, that can be our training ground and we can grow our own. We know how tough it is to find special ed teachers. And it's just not a position that is attracting a lot of candidates right now. And if we have an opportunity to grow our own in that department, that, that makes us even better. But again, those are general fund dollars that we're, we're really just saving, saving right now.
Gail?
I'll, I'll just say I highly approve of adding counseling services. Having been at the high school, I, I see that as a real need. And if we look down the road, I wonder if we could even think out of the box. I know a lot of small schools have trouble contracting for counselors, especially for someone part-time. If there weren't ways as we proceed, if that were an issue, that we couldn't use some creativity to meet our school's needs and the needs of many surrounding districts as well.
Rob?
And as you know, we actually do that to a degree, and that was a position you held at one point. And our CTC center does have a counselor, and that person goes to Gackle, maybe to Pingree next year, to Montpelier and support them as well. And actually, I believe it's almost full-time, well, one day a week, I think, at CTC, and then the rest of the days moving around in, in the region.
Aaron?
Yeah, and I really do like the, the stipend approach for the staff development there. I think that's a, that's a great idea because working within, with what you have. But it did raise a, a point that I think us as a board need to recognize is that our, you know, tying it in with the strategic plan and for progress monitoring and making sure we're getting the bang for our buck. That strategic plan's a little out of date, and so I think that would drive a, a need for us to get that updated, especially considering too, we have our three and five-year plan due next year. So we, I think making sure we have some attention on that this summer would be a good idea.
Jason?
So what will be our approach as, you know, budgets are never static? What will be our approach as we go through this whole process, numbers one through nine, to keep the board updated? I'm assuming the board would have to approve. I guess I'm just wondering, how's that going to look? Is, is this going to be a standing agenda item where we are updated not every meeting? But could you just address that a little bit if you understand?
Yeah, no, I do understand. Good question. I think we've seen throughout the, the course of the last year with ESR in general, we've brought far, far more budget revisions to the board than we traditionally do, and we don't have a need for that. There's a couple areas in here, and really the bulk of them would change, and so we would need to bring, bring budget revisions. I wouldn't say it'd be every meeting, but as needed, maybe quarterly, twice a year or something like that. You know, I'll just give you an example. We project what that additional counselor would be. We could find somebody with 25 years of experience that makes more than that number. Or we could find somebody with, that's new to counseling, that would be less than that number, and that would require a budget revision. Once we know those numbers, every year we would have negotiations which would change those numbers. The stipends for staff development is a good example because we have to budget those assuming everybody does it. But that's the reality when they're choices, not everybody is going to choose. People are going to look at that and say, well, it's not for me. I don't want to do that. And they're optional. We're not requiring people to do that, but we budget for everybody. And so even just say half of that, well, that's $400,000 over the course of three years, that needs to be reallocated somewhere else. And that's why they're in priority order, because we do have areas like our facility projects, that's, even at 5 million, that's less than, clearly less than what we need from a long-term facility standpoint, and we could look more there. We do have the 20% learning loss, and we have to fit into those boxes and those requirements, and that might be a different area that we look at. When we look at contracted services, services for mental health therapies, we're taking a stab at the dark and saying what that's going to cost. That could be more than that, it could, it could be less than that. And so all of those are going to require budget revisions, which would then reallocate. But my, my perspective on this would, when we're approving it, we're saying, these are the nine buckets. These are the nine projects, and we're just shifting dollars. And I see them shifting up. You shift up to priorities. If we are targeting number one priorities, as long as they fit into learning loss, that's where that bucket's going to go. It's not a hard and fast rule necessarily, but I think for the most part, that's how it would work.
Jason?
Okay, thank you for that last analogy of the buckets, the nine buckets. So you, so if, if we approve this here tonight, those would be our buckets, and then an amendment later down the road or a revision could not include like a 10th bucket, let's say. I mean, we, I mean, we can do what we need to and choose to. I just want a feeling of Dr. Leck and the board as far as what we would actually be approving tonight, I feel would just be those nine buckets, correct?
That's the intention, but the board would always have the opportunity to, to, to make different choices and related to what a priority might be. You know, we're extending all the way through 2024. The reality we live in in 2024 could look a little bit different, and you, as a board might say, we, we had, we had planned for these nine buckets, but we're really doing these 10 buckets or these eight projects or whatever it is. You have that flexibility, but we need to be able to move forward as a district. Like I said, with the, the staff development initiative, if that's a, if that's a move forward, I need to mobilize people and say, okay, what does this, what does this project look like in, in a, a greater example than what I've shown? That to me is a shell. That gives a good idea, but it's not, it's not the project, and we need to move forward with that. We need to hire a counselor. You know, we need to have the direction to move forward on some of those areas. And that's really, you know, what we're looking at with the preliminary budget.
Is there a motion to approve the preliminary ESR budget? Motion by Aaron, seconded by Gail. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving into personnel, is there a motion to approve the hire of Jacob Stillwell, sixth grade science teacher at the middle school, BA salary of $45,789.50 upon successful completion of background check and then salary to be adjusted upon completion of negotiations? Motion by Melissa, seconded by Heidi. Any discussion? Hearing none, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to letter B, is there a motion to approve the summer school staff? Motion by Bob, seconded by Melissa. Any discussion? Jason?
Subject of summer school, depending on what transpires here tonight with masks and whatnot, are we still taking anything COVID-wise into account for summer school? Are we going to cross that bridge when we get there? And I guess the reason I'm asking is because I, I think it went very well last year, holding it, holding elementary at Gustner because of the distancing. I don't know if that's still the plan or what, but can you just talk a little bit about summer school and COVID?
So I think you're, you're going to deal with that particular issue in, in one more agenda item. I think where the board will make a decision on timelines and, and those types of areas. But I can tell you in, in general, in terms of summer school, the idea would be utilize the mitigation strategies that the board directs in terms of the health and safety
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving into policy and procedures, we're up to the governor's rescinding in the executive order, district health and safety plan. Rob, you want to?
And well, you just listened to me talk for a while, and now you get to listen to me again, so I apologize for that. So I, I created a memo, and I know you haven't had a chance to see, but I, I wanted to have something down that you could look to and, you know, as you look to make this decision. And I just kind of want to walk you through. Number one, the reason that we're here is because of Governor Burgum's determination to rescind the executive orders. That's why we're here. Every time that there has been a significant variable change, as a board, you've done your job. You've looked at that variable change and had a discussion. It's what the community expects of you. It's what our staff expects of you to have a discussion about it. And I, and I know that this just came up in April, and we had discussion, which I felt was a good, honest, respectful discussion on the topic, and you made a decision. And then variable changes, and you have to bring it back again and have great, have that discussion again. From a history standpoint, I just want to share my perspective, probably first and foremost, to the fact that I, I believe the district's done really well. I think we've done really well throughout the process, and I'm really proud of the work that our staff has done, that really everybody has done. We had stakeholders look at a lot of different plans across the country, our regulations as a state, and we, and we worked to draft an initial health and safety plan. And with a focus on safely reopening Jamestown Public. A group of those individuals, we've continued to meet every other week, and we look at data, and we talk about data, and we make decisions related to the instructional plan. So it didn't just end in the summer, it continued on. And those are people that are very vested in making the best possible decisions for our district. As I referenced, the board has operated with, I feel, great diligence in vetting that plan initially. We had great discussion on it. And again, the whole purpose is to keep students and staff safe. We considered that as variables have changed. You've had those discussions when you need to, and you've made changes when you need to, to meet the current needs. We know that the plan we created in, in August, or July and August, doesn't meet the needs even of our students anymore. We've had to make change since then, variable change like mask kids, like the exemption status. That was a good example of how the board had to really continue to look at existing needs and current needs. Our administrators have done an excellent job managing all those different responsibilities, and their job is to make sure that conditions exist for, for our kids to be educated. And I think they've done a great job with that. Our, our staff, our teachers and support staff, you know, as an aside, we shouldn't need a week every year to honor the great work our teachers do. We have it, we have teacher appreciation, teacher appreciation week, but we should really do that every week. But our teachers and support staff, they've really been on the front lines. They've been doing outstanding work, making sure that our young people, whether they're in virtual learning, whether they've been sitting in a quarantine situation, whether they're in hybrid, our teachers have had to take on, and our staff in general have had to take on different responsibilities. As a dad of a student that goes to school at Jamestown Public Schools, and as a community member, I don't believe we could have asked for much more than what our district has provided. I'm very proud of them. Like I said, on April 30th, executive orders by Governor Burgum related to the pandemic were rescinded. I will say the timing of that decision is unfortunate, and it, it presents really obvious challenges that we have to deal with. But as I stated, it's prudent for us to have a thoughtful and respectful conversation around this point and just determine what the next step is for our district, just like you've done throughout the year. And I think it's important to state that we have to have this conversation, and we will have this conversation, but whatever decision that we make is not going to have universal acceptance. It simply isn't. We've heard from people throughout the year on all sides of this, and we continue to hear from all sides. And it's something that, like I said, it's not going to have universal acceptance, no matter what you do. There are going to have some that feel very strongly on one side or the other, and that's okay. But there's a lot of folks that are just looking for direction. They're just looking for the board to make a decision and say, this is what we believe, this is why we believe it, and this is the direction we're going to go down. It just needs to be reasonable for the rest of the year. I'm going to have some options, and of course, reasonability looks different for different people, right? But I'm going to have some options for you to consider, and I'm going to talk about why I think they're reasonable and other challenges that are going to be presented, because every plan does. Every option I have, have things that you can rally behind, and they're going to have things that, that make you struggle a little bit. There isn't a, like I said, a universally accepted solution, there just isn't. And you're, as a board, we're going to have to accept that as a district. Before I get into options, though, I want to talk about the data that we have. We collect a lot of data on this point. I've talked about this to the board in the past. We collect data every day. Every day we get noticed from either a state notification, we get family notifications every single day. We collect data, we look at it, our principals look at their building data every single day. I look at it every single day, and we disaggregate it three times a week. I do it on Mondays, on Wednesdays, and then Fridays. Fridays are the days we report. I think we have a really good sense of what's happened in our district, particularly since mid-October. When we started being a little bit more diligent, as we've seen the spikes increase during that time, and we really realized, boy, the data collection is going to be critical for us to understanding what's really happening in our schools. We do know that in the last month, we, we've seen an impact spike. And what do I mean by impact spike? That relates to four different areas. Positives and household contacts. That's what we get from the Department of Health. They determine if somebody is positive, of course, we know how that works. But if there's household contacts, that's how we're noticed, Department of Health. There's others that we add to the list, and that, those are our close contact quarantines and our exempts. So those are the four areas that we track, okay? Two, two, supported by the state, two that we add to the list. So like I said, that's reviewed daily, it's disaggregated three times a week. So what we know, and I, I just put some numbers in this, if you want to look at it, it's Board Memo 72. It's linked to your agenda. March, we had some really hopeful numbers. We were really pleased with what we saw in March. So just to give you, in those four categories, just to give you a sense and, and to provide context, our positive cases within that month in those three checkpoints a week range from zero to three in positive cases. Sounds great. Household contacts were from three to 11. Our close contact quarantines were zero to 12, and our close contact exempts were eight to 24. And just a reminder, the close contact exempts, those are people that, students or staff that were exposed, or were in that exposure window, but they were properly masked, so they're still, still able to come to school. Later on, in the, in my report, I show that since that change, 770 students were placed in close contact exempt status. Had that not been the case, those were, those were kids that are coming, that were coming to school and are coming to school, that's 770 kids that would have been at home in quarantine. That was a wise choice. About 2,600 impacts throughout the district, 770 fit in that close contact exempt. That was a great choice by the board, very thoughtful to make sure that that was done because those kids were able to go to school and participate in their learning, and the staff too. Close contact exempts again from eight, a range of eight to 24. In April, that increased in all of those categories. We saw an increase with a range of from between two and 11 positive cases during that timeframe. 12 to 20 household contacts, eight to 26 close contact quarantines, and 10 to 46 close contact exempts. So certainly a shift up from a shift up from March to April. I do think it's important to point out our high watermark, and I've talked about our high watermark before, and that was the month of November. If you look at November, we had positive cases that ranged from seven to 33, again, for context, seven to 33 positive cases. Household contacts ranged from 62 to 140. Close contact quarantines in the month of November were between 81 and 128, and close contact exempts were in a, in a range from 52 to 123. So we're certainly not at where we are, where we were in November, which is a great sign. But we also are at an increase from what we saw in March. We have a lot of comments and questions related to in-school transmission. And I wanna be real cautious about this. There's a lot of things we don't know. I'll, I can give you a number and I can tell you how I got to that number, but that doesn't mean anything other than what I define it to mean. And I want us as, as a district and you as a board to be really cautious with that number. It's eight, but it's eight as we define it. We defined in-school transmission as an individual who's been in close contact quarantine or exempt that tests positive. So that number is eight. Does that mean that's the only in-school transmission? That number could be higher. That number could be lower to what actually is. And nobody will be able to tell you what that number actually is. I'm just telling you, we were trying to deal with facts. What I knew for certain was how many students that were, or staff that were determined to be a close contact that became positive. That's a fact. I can, I know that. But that number could be 46, it could be six, because a student that was in close contact quarantine could've been exposed somewhere else, but they just happened to be a close contact quarantine, and so we put them on our list. We could have students or staff that chose not to test, and so we wouldn't know that they were positive. I just want us to be real cautious. We, we talk about that number, oh, it wasn't very high, or it was very high, or it was this number or that number. We don't know. But that's what in-school transmission has been defined at, and we're talking about fact. That's what I know. So I, I think it's important to point that out. And I, I think it's important too, to reiterate that we're talking about not all students, not of, not all of our students are tested. There's a lot of unknowns here. And that number could be inflated or it could be, it could be too high. So the options, the things that I've outlined, that I, that I said I would at the beginning of this, there's three options that I think that you should consider as a board. And of course, there's always the opportunity to have an option I haven't thought of, that you need to have discussion on, but there's three that I've thought of. I can, I could argue for and against all of them, and I could support all of them. The first option would be to simply continue with the existing health and safety plan through the end of the year and possibly through summer school. Our students and staff, while I can assure you they have a level of fatigue, they also have a level of comfort in knowing what the procedures are and what the expectations are. It would be hard, I'd be hard pressed to say that the existing plan has not done well. They have. It has done well in terms of mitigating risk. It is the option that complies the best with the Department of Health and CDC recommendations and guidelines on mitigation. They're the experts in the area. I, I'll tell you what, I felt I've, I've learned a lot more about public health in the last year than I thought I ever would as a school district superintendent, but I'm not a doctor. I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not a specialist in the transmission of, of communicable diseases. That's not my job. That's not my role. And I don't believe anybody in this, around this table, tables has that either. The CDC and the Department of Health, that's what their job is. They do their job pretty well, and, and I think they've certainly been under a lot of scrutiny in the last year, but they're the experts. They know that better than I do. And so this presents, this continuation presents the most consistent path and the safest path in terms of what is recommended by those entities. On the downside of this option, and again, I feel like it's important to reiterate that it's the governor's orders and this timing is why we're having the discussion. But we only have a few short weeks of school left, and to consider a change now with just a few short weeks left also presents challenges. But it, like I said, on the downside, a lot of the impact that we have seen when I've talked about the impact, that's been self-developed. We, we have investigated those. Yeah. And again, that's a result of the governor's orders, our health and safety plan, our requirement to conduct those investigations and our close contact investigations. We've been required to do that, and a lot of that impact has been us. We have found lunchroom contacts. We have found classroom contacts or contacts at recess or activities, whatever it is. And the reality is, a large number of those kids and staff have not become positive. That's reality. While we've been required to do it, we have, and I think our administrators and all those staff involved have done a really good job, but a lot of those kids aren't becoming positive. A lot of those staff are not becoming positive, at least to our knowledge. Again, we don't know everything, because you have to be tested to know that. We know that some people are not taking that option. But it's, it's not certain. But regardless, we have a lot of kids and a lot of staff missing instructional time. And that is an option to consider when you're thinking of this. So yes, the safest option, the one that complies best with CDC guidelines and the Department of Health guidelines is continuation. It's worked, this, it's worked so far and can, you know, it, it's common sense to consider continuing. And on the other hand, you have a lot of kids missing school. And so that's a factor as well. The section, second option I have is to continue, is to discontinue close contact tracing. You know, I, as I've noted previously, the board amended that health and safety plan and you made a change, and that kept 770 kids in school. As a, as a school district, we have a responsibility to educate our kids. They learn best when they're here in school. So i- in terms of close contact exempt, none of those kids, at least to our knowledge, became positive while in exempt status. It was quarantine status. Those eight instances that we know of, it was close contact quarantine. In this option, the second option to discontinue contact, close contact tracing, the district would honor the designations, or my suggestion is you would honor the designations of positive and household contacts, essentially what the Department of Health tells us in terms of positives and in household contacts. You'd honor that. You'd ask those families to keep their kids home. We wouldn't add to the list, though. We would stop doing those investigations, say for lunch contacts or for a classroom contact, because the majority of those kids have not been getting sick. And we know that because we've been pretty consistent with our data and we have looked at that, you know, pretty, pretty comprehensively. And again, we just simply wouldn't add to the list. We would, we wouldn't investigate close contacts on school grounds or in activities. If there is a recommended close contact quarantine from the state, we would encourage our families to follow those recommendations, but they would be family recommendations. The only times we would ask students to stay home is positive or household contacts. I can tell you from a household contact standpoint, we've had five household contacts in the last week that have transitioned to positives. I think, you know, histor, from, we don't have data on this, but I will say, we can say really pretty clearly that our household contacts have a much higher rate of positivity, and I think that's common sense, but they've had a much higher rate of positivity than our close contact quarantines. And I think it's important, especially in the last week with what we've seen, that household contacts would continue to be students or staff that stay home. But the close contact quarantines, if they've been recommended from the state, we would encourage them to follow CDC guidelines, but it would be a family decision. The third option, oh, the downside of this option, of course, it doesn't comply as well to the Department of Health guidelines and the CDC guidelines. And, you know, the reality is that it has, creates a greater likelihood of spread. It would be a fairly significant change to our, our system with only a few weeks left remaining after its implementation. So you would have a couple of weeks to transition, you know, instead of just riding it out. The third option that I would suggest to discuss is to discontinue contact tracing in the same manner that I've outlined in Option 2, and then transition the district from required masking to recommended masking. So I think it's fair to ask the question, what's the rationale for this consideration and this option? And it's that without contact tracing, you know, I laid that foundation earlier when we talked about the transition to exempt status. The reason we transitioned to required masks was outside of the health benefit, the safety discussion, but mostly it related specifically to the governor's ability to consider an exposed student either as a close contact quarantine or an exempt student. Without that, if you're not doing close contact or contact tracing, you could make the argument that then we don't need to have masking either. It doesn't consider the mitigation aspect of masks. And I'm not talking the science. You could have 10 people come up and, and talk about masks and the science behind masks. People are gonna say different things. You know, some people are gonna say that they're effective, some people are gonna say they aren't effective. We, I, I am not a medical professional. I can't speak to that. I can follow what guidelines say. The people that I entrust to make those decisions say those are healthy, those help you make safe choices, or that's a safe choice. And so it doesn't consider the mitigation aspects of masks. It further deviates from recommendations from the Department of Health and the CDC, and it would, it would, if you'd ask them, would present, would be the least supported, supported by those entities of the three options, from those entities and those specialists. Again, I've outlined three areas for you. I could make arguments that all three of them are good and all three of them should be avoided. It's, you're in a tough spot. Other considerations I think that you need to think about, and I'd be happy to engage in any part of this discussion as well, is the start date of any change. If you opt to make a change, you need to give staff and the district the opportunity to communicate and to transition to that change. It might seem minor. Some of these things might seem minor, but we need time organizationally to make a change. And I would recommend, if you did it a week, May 10th, that would be more than enough time for us to reasonably implement and communicate a change. Another potential option that you may wanna consider is, we had a smart restart team that, of stakeholders I referenced at the very beginning, get together and have a conversation and bring recommendations to the board. You may wanna ask them. You may wanna ask them to engage this week if they would, and bring it back another recommendation to you this week. I'm not saying that you need to do that. I'm just providing another option to consider. You know, I'm gonna close with the fact that, I've said this a few times, whatever you do isn't gonna be universally supported. We've heard from people on all sides of this issue, and we're gonna continue to hear from people on all sides of this issue regardless of whatever option is selected today. I think there can be rational arguments for every single option that's before you, and I'm sure an option that you can create that I didn't think about that could even be better. But there isn't gonna be any one of them that's gonna be universally supported. I think implementation by May 10th makes sense, but at this point, my recommendation would be that you have discussion on options and you provide direction to the administration on how to proceed. Like I said, I'd be happy to engage in any discussion as well to help formulate what the next step and best steps for the district are. Gail?
In reading the memo and reading Jennifer's comments, she made a comment about ventilation systems in our school and because of certain types of ventilation in different buildings, masking in those, in those cases, it, she said, might be, makes sense. Do we know how many air exchanges, like I looked on the OSHA website and they recommend five per hour has shown to substantially decrease the spread of coronavirus, especially in school settings and work settings. Do we know what kind of air exchanges we have at this time? Is that information we can be collecting as we move forward? Do we know where, where that issue is with ventilation?
Well, I would say from a, we have a lot of work to do, and we've seen that in our capital projects plan in terms of improving air handlers and air quality. I, I would say our oldest buildings, which are all, our oldest buildings are all in the K through eight area. I see the most challenges related to, to air quality. I, I wouldn't say that any of them fit into a, you know, if you're gonna rank, they're all challenged in terms of creating high-quality air exchange.
Greg, you have a comment? Sell your mic.
My hand raised, but that's okay.
If you'd stand up.
The, the question I have, you know, given the situation and a lot of the changes we've seen, I'm, I'm really interested in that option three where we could go to a recommendation. But now with that recommendation, would that include inside and outside of the facility? I just wanna understand that.
So what I'm suggesting in, in Option 3, I'm not completely sure I understand your question, but I wanna, if I don't, you can follow up. But the third option would be discontinue contact tracing. So anything that happens on school grounds and in activities, we would stop doing. For example, if we had a, a student that was in our building and was in, within that exposure window, that would be part of a Department of Health investigation, not a school investigation. And if that, if a recommendation comes, or if the Department of Health determines that that's a close contact quarantine, or if through that investigation that occurs, we would encourage the family to, to follow those guidelines, but it would not be as it currently is, we keep those students home. It would be a recommendation to their family, whether it happens in activities outside of the school building or whether it happens at the lunch table. Did that answer your question, Greg?
Yes, it does. And I, I guess the, the question then to follow up with that is that if that were the case, why, you know, and the Department of Health is recommending that, why wouldn't we say, you know, we're at least gonna follow the guidelines from the, you know, Central Valley or Department of Health?
Well, that's what we do now. And we certainly could honor that. That would be, you know, certainly within the board's purview to, to make that decision. You know, my thought is, when we're dealing with the recommendations from, or when we're dealing with notifications from the Department of Health, you know, our two primary areas of concern are household contacts and positive cases. I think it prioritizes, this, this option prioritizes those two areas. But we certainly could, or the board could make the decision to say we're gonna honor all of them. We just haven't seen, Greg, the, the number of students in close contact quarantine, just haven't seen them getting sick, at least not to that same level of household contacts.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Most of you know, there's another district with which I work, and in that district, when our, our Safe Return to School Plan said that when the governor's plan, or when the governor put the state in red, or Stutzman County in red, we would require masks. And that's what we did. And if we were at any other level, that we would not require masks. When he removed the level from red, we no longer required masks. From the day we no longer required masks, it was steady decline in the kids wearing masks, down to where now the last few, I'd say the last month, month and a half, I see almost nobody wearing masks. That's what you're gonna see happen if, if we go to recommended. For a few days. For a few days, there won't be kids, there'll be kids that'll wear masks, there'll be teachers wearing masks, and eventually they'll disappear. There's only a few weeks left in the school district, so I don't know, especially if we wait until the 10th. So probably that's mitigating, but you will see a definite decline in masking.
Aaron?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm for, you know, eliminating the contact tracing and making masks just recommended. Just from a policy standpoint, I guess legal policy standpoint, you know, what the, we implemented the health and safety plan as a result of a executive order 2020-38, which was driven by the emergency declaration from the governor. And so now with the emergency declaration removed, there's no requirement levied on any school district to have a health and safety plan. And so it's just, it's on us, I mean, as the, as the policyholders to, you know, to, to do that. But we're working outside any legal century code requirement to have this in place. So I think that's something to consider. Another thing is, you know, there's no statewide mask mandate. The city lifted their mandate. Several businesses in town are no longer mandated. The kids are in school a few hours a day. They go outside of school. It's a, the community is different now, too. And I think we have to recognize that, that, you know, if they're not, if they're wearing masks in school but not outside of school, you know, what are we, what are we really And I think we got, we've been lucky to some degree, too, with the weather. We had a nice, cool fall. This spring's been fairly cool. I'm glad, I was going to recommend that on Saturday, if we would have the temperatures, that we go and have this meeting on the third floor of the middle school when it's 85 degrees out and see how we react to wearing masks in that environment. So, you know, I think there's other things we have to consider that, then, you know, the guidelines from the CDC, which I somewhat question anyway, but side issue. So I guess that would be my, my position.
Melissa, then?
First of all, I just want to thank all of the parents and teachers who have sent emails, texts, and letters to, to myself and the other board members. I want you to know I have listened to the podcasts, I have read the articles that have been sent along with that, as well as doing my own research throughout the, the entire pandemic. I make my own decisions not out of fear or out of alluded consequences to how I vote. We still have new cases that are coming up in Jamestown. I know of some just today that, that I heard of just before I came in. Numbers are low in school because we are wearing the masks. I don't want to have to cancel graduation because we have an outbreak at the last minute. That would not be fair to, to those students or their families. Most of the schools that are no longer masking are much smaller schools or even private schools. Some of the larger schools that have gone to no masking have had outbreaks and have had to actually quarantine their entire freshman class, like in Moorhead. Some of the larger, excuse me, yep. Because of that, I cannot justify the extra burden and stress that it's going to put on families who choose not to send their children if masking is removed. I have heard from parents saying, if the mask mandate is removed, I will no longer send my child to school. I don't want them in, in school. So that's going to put an extra burden on those families to have to come up with the last three weeks of school, taking off work, making arrangements to, to finish off online. It also puts extra burden on staff, faculty, and the administration to come up with a plan for those last three weeks. If the mask mandate is removed, it's not going to happen overnight. It will not happen tomorrow. It would happen on May 10th probably, which leaves 11 and a half days left of school. And for that reason, I cannot justify putting that extra burden on families as well as our, our staff and faculty. And I would like to recommend that we stay the course.
Diane, and then Heidi.
I too would like to thank those that have gotten involved in this issue and done their homework. I too have done a lot of reading and research since this all began, and there is no easy path. And as Dr. Lex says, there is certainly no path that everyone's going to approve of. But that's part of our job, is, it's not a popularity contest. And I am with Melissa on almost everything she said. I was going to say some of the same things. We're looking at 11 days here, folks, and I don't see how I can justify in my mind allowing, dropping a mask mandate that I believe is being, is quite effective for 11 days of not wearing a mask. It doesn't compute for me. And Governor Burgum's directive is unfortunate timing. And I recommend that we follow the guidelines of the CDC and the North Dakota Department of Health and stay the course.
Heidi?
I do appreciate all the comments that I've received and emails. I've read them and responded to them, and unless I've received multiple, I at least respond to one of them. And I've spent the last week visiting with a lot of people. I've gone to events, I've visited with parents, I've visited with people from other school districts that have made decisions a lot of different ways, just seeing how, how things changed after, you know. You know, certainly, anytime you make a change, you're going to hear from people that weren't happy with the change you made, you know. And so, so it, you know, it, either way, it's, it's, there is no easy win in this. I do know that the Department of Health is still doing contact tracing. They, they have not stopped contact tracing. If we decide to, it takes a lot of our administrators' time to do the contact tracing in our schools. I, you know, by, by not doing that, the Department of Health will still do some of that, it's just going to rely, it would just be a different, different pathway. And I, if we are going to discontinue the masks, I would like to see it happen at least a week or maybe even a little more than that from now, just to, just ensure that we can make it through the end of the year without, without having to close a school. I do sense that there is certainly an appetite for going without masks. I understand that we don't have good ventilation in our schools, which is a reason to wear a mask and maybe a reason not to because of the, as you mentioned, Aaron, the heat, the heat, you know. We've, we've been fortunate to have good temperatures. So those are my thoughts. I, I think it, it's good that we have a good discussion on this and then come to a decision and stick by our decision on it. So, thank you.
Gail?
Are we able to utilize our outdoor spaces that we have available now so we can get classes out and possibly? I know recent CDC guidance has said that outdoor spaces are a lot safer. Are we having our children take off their masks for recess and giving them time to do that? Are we taking advantage of so much education that can take place outside? I know back, back in the old days when I was a classroom teacher, kids loved being outside in the spring, it's such a sense of renewal. Are we utilizing things that we have available to us so that we could maybe have, have some kind of reason so that we could have masks inside where we don't have maybe the quality of air we want? But whenever possible, you know, have outdoor classrooms. I just read an article that in 1918, even in the coldest of winter, a lot of schools moved outside and utilized that. Are we able to think outside of the box so that we still follow CDC, North Dakota Department of Health guidelines and yet give them some of that fresh air and utilize outside? We have, I think most of our, our buildings have outdoor space that could be utilized for those options. Could we look at things like that? I know a lot of times this time of year, you know, once those 10 days are up, a lot of things happen outside. We have activities that the middle school does outside where they do, do those things. I struggle with, with not following North Dakota Department of Health guidelines. I know in my 30-plus years in education, they've been such a resource and done so well by our students. Back, you know, prior to that, when I was a child, when they did Herculean efforts to immunize us, when the German measles shot became available. I think they've been a great resource, and I understand being so tired of this pandemic. I am too. Even if we have different views about what keeps us safe, I, I think we need to keep in mind that all pandemics end, and this one will end too. And it's been collective trauma for many different people, for many different reasons. And that is going to manifest itself in a lot of different reasons, from let's throw the masks away and let's be done with this, to I need to cover myself up more. That's how we respond to trauma. And I think we're probably missing something if we're not looking at this as having been a collective trauma for our school district, our state, our nation, our world right now. I mean, as a world, the pandemic is at its highest point today. We have more cases worldwide, and I just want us to all be a part about bringing this pandemic to a final close so that I don't have to have this, this kind of discussion. And if that means, I mean, I'd like to see us all maybe row together to get to the end of the school year, whatever we decide. But I would agree with what Melissa said. I have talked to a parent over the phone who has a medically fragile child, whose world will be turned upside down with this decision, and, and doesn't know what, what they will do. I, I, I think sometimes, too, we have to remember the least of us and how that man might impact a couple of those families in our school if it means doing that to the end of the school year. But it doesn't mean I don't have sympathy for all sides. I mean, there's nothing about this that goes lightly. I don't sleep at night worrying about this. I have stomach aches about it, wanting to make the right decisions. I, I think back to what happened in Marshall, Minnesota. I mean, maybe it's a pain, but if we prevent one first grader's death, that could happen, it was probably, you know, it wasn't probably, it was worth it. It was worth it. I, I'm sure that, and the other thing is, I, I realize that is a very small amount of cases that happened. I have tried to inquire, I'm still waiting to get a response about what our numbers are for the sequence of the B117 that appears to be causing the spikes in younger people. I haven't got that information back to me yet because I thought, I know that they know that in the cases that have went up in Minnesota, that those variants are, are involved, that the wild type virus doesn't seem like it impacted transmission in schools to the degree they feared it would, which was wonderful news. But I, I don't think we even have those data to make some of those decisions, too. I do know, I, I asked them and they said that the average hospitalization right now in our state, the age is coming down. I'm trying to look, the problem is, is that data is occurring as we go, too. So those are just my thoughts, and nothing about this decision is easy and nothing about the pandemic is.
Rob?
Gail, yes, a question about thinking outside the box and utilizing more outdoor if we can. I think I've shared these thoughts before, but every teacher, when it hits spring, we think about how can we utilize outdoor space. What I've shared in the past, my office faces the green space. And I see every time, maybe when I go to lunch or when I'm walking outside or going to a, a building where teachers are utilizing outdoor spaces in spring, it's not pandemic-related, it's just the weather's great and the kids get a little spring fever and we want to utilize that outdoor space. When I, my, my office window faces the green space, and I love seeing our, our young people out on the green space in PE. And it happens really pretty frequently. One of my favorite times of year, Mr. Hahn is here, so I'm not saying this just because you're here, Mr. Hahn. But one of my favorite things in the spring is having our, our band students practicing, our marching band students, and getting to hear the great work that they do outside, whether it's a walking inside and Mrs. Gall is doing her class out in the, in the, in the courtyard area out here in, in the grass. And so I think our teachers utilize that space a lot. And if there's a greater reason to do it as the weather gets nice, yeah, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure in every building you're going to have more staff utilizing that outdoor space. And since our last board meeting, we have talked with all of our elementary buildings and asked that recess has, that they can distance and would not have masks outside.
Heidi or Melissa?
Sorry, there's one other thing I forgot to mention is, I, I, although I'd like to see the mask mandate stay through the end of the regular school year, I think it needs to be a separate discussion for what we're going to do for summer school.
Jason, you have a comment?
Sure. I, I too want to thank the community. I think it's essential that we have these conversations in order for this board to work effectively also. That's, that's key. And what the, the comments I appreciated the most were the ones that mentioned, and I think pretty much everybody mentioned that they understand how difficult this is, they, they thanked us for the work that's been done, that's very much appreciated. And then also that whatever the board does decide, whichever side of the fence you're on, I, I really appreciate it when some folks said they would respect the decision. So right now, I feel the only thing we can agree on is that masks stink. They are no fun. And to one of Gail's points about trauma, one of my biggest concerns is that we will be seeing the effects of this for many years, as far as what the masks are doing to our kids and that sort of thing. I still go back to, I still go back to, I'm never a fan of comparing what we do with other schools in, in making decisions because everybody is different. I, I can't vouch for those schools that have dropped this mandate, what their square footage is, what their plan has been. I can't vouch for that. I appreciate the fact that there are large and small schools who have looked at this so we can maybe learn a few things. But on that list are also schools who have chosen to keep the mask mandate till the end of the year, again, for their own reasons. I'm not saying that's why we, you know, that, that should, it's important to me to know what's going on, but, and as a few of our messages said from folks, we are elected to represent our students and our families and our staff. But then that's why I also struggle when some of those emails then say that, you know, so in such and such school did this, such and such school did that. So what, you know, what is best, what is best for us? And, and the, I say that meaning I don't want us to lose sight of one very important thing here is that, yes, these masks are no fun, but there are literally hundreds of thousands of kids in this country who would love to have been able to come to school this year and wear a mask. So the point of that is, we have successfully implemented a plan for eight months. There's, Dr. Lex's recommendation is whatever we decide to do is May 10th if there's a change. You know, and that would leave such a small amount of time left in the year. I just feel that we have much more to lose than gain. And, you know, and, and those are just my thoughts. Again, it's an, it's a no-win situation. If this discussion was being had at semester break time, I probably would feel totally different about it. But again, it's, it's just such a divisive issue, and I know, I just, my heart goes out to, to everybody who, you know, who has to abide by this. I just, I just can't see myself, I don't know, I, I just can't, I just can't reconcile in my mind that we've worked so hard for eight months and there's a few weeks left of the school year. And some of, you know, some of you might disagree and say that that's, you know, not a, not valid point, but that's what my brain keeps. a, not a valid point, but that's what my brain keeps going back to. Our superintendent of public instruction, you know, sent out a letter to all educators recommending what the Department of Health says. And the mask is just one line of defense, so I would just really struggle to see us veer away at this point from what's worked.
Would entertain a motion at this time? Oh, go ahead, Greg.
I just wanted to comment before we look at the motion. And this has to do, you know, with the whole idea of the mask. We say we have had success, and there's no question that we have, but I don't think we can scientifically trace that back to that happened because we wore masks. And we can't say that it didn't. We certainly can't say that it did. So wearing the mask, certainly we did that, but did that actually, you know, fully impact the numbers that we have? My other thought is, and the reason why I was looking at the idea of a recommendation to wear masks or make it voluntary, because if there's a parent that is concerned about a child, their child can still wear a mask. I don't think there's any data out there that tells us if one person is wearing a mask and the person walking past them isn't, that they're going to transfer the COVID to that person. There's just no data for that. But if a person felt like they did believe in that and thought that was possible, then they could still have their student, or a teacher, or someone on staff wear a mask. I have no, or wear two masks. I mean, that's, that could be their option. But I struggle with putting this on all of our kids. And I know it's just a short time left, but I think, and I agree with Gail, I think of the trauma that this is having. We need to see each other's faces. We need to see each other smile. And I really struggle with what we've done, the effects that's going to have in the future. I know that kids are resilient, and when you look at the numbers of COVID, the kids are not the ones that are suffering. It's the adults that are really suffering from this. So I kind of struggle with, you know, putting this on our kids. I'm as concerned about their health as anyone is, and that's why. I feel that, you know, looking at a plan that would make it voluntary, or taking away the requirement, make it voluntary or a recommendation, and those that want to send their kids with masks, the staff that want to wear masks, they can't. And the ones that feel comfortable with them not for these last three weeks, or however period of time, then that's fine, too.
Heidi, you got it, and then Aaron.
So I'm going to move forward with a motion, and then we can maybe dice it out with my motion, but, so my motion, I had to write it down here to make sure I got it all. I'm going to make a motion to that our school district discontinue the in-school contact tracing that we do by our administration on May 10th. I still want to have students that are household contacts stay home for their Department of Health-recommended time, as well as our positive cases or symptomatic students. I'd like to make masks strongly recommended, starting May 17th through the remainder of the school year. And recommend that families let us know if they're, and keep their children home if they have been deemed a Department of Health close contact. And I guess that's information they would have to share with us. I don't know that we get that information. So that is my motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Bob, seconds? Discussion? Aaron?
Just to clarify, May 17th and?
Yeah, stop contact tracing on May 10th, and then make masks strongly recommended May 17th, which in my mind gives us very close.
Starting?
Making it through, yeah, this is Monday, yeah. After that Friday.
Any other discussion?
Amendment to that motion. And I would, the motion to start May 10th.
There's a motion to amend. Is there a second? Seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? Diane?
Just to complete the social circle of what this will do, one way or the other, to different families, we just don't know for sure. But I have, you know, a child that, when everybody drops their mask, which I think most people will do, I think Mr. Toso is right, it won't be 24 hours until the majority of students are without masks, then I'm going to tell my middle schooler that he must wear a mask. That's another pressure. And it's just something to think about. There's so many different angles to this, so many different medical angles and social angles and trauma angles, but that's something that we may not have thought about. Those that would like to follow the CDC guidelines are going to have them flaunted in their face, literally. So I'm not sure how I will vote, but I do think that it's a complicated situation, and I can only look at my own family for an answer right now, as well as the people that have written in and talked about it. There's just a lot of discussion out there, and there is no clear path.
Discussion on the amendment? Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, a roll call on the amendment? To move from the second to the 10th? Right, the amendment. Amendment first. Jason?
Could I just get a clarification, please? Just so we all are on the same page. Dr. Larson moved to discontinue trace contact, trace contact. Okay, our own. And then have masks strongly recommended on May 17th. And then we would discontinue the tracing on May 10th. Okay, I feel like I'm missing a piece of that.
Greg's amendment?
Right.
So we would, you know, the administration stop assisting the Department of Health with the contact tracing next week.
Okay, yep.
And then we would continue to have, don't change our masking policy until after Friday of 14.
Okay, okay.
And some events after that, there's probably events on the weekend, so, and then masks would just be.
After that point.
The remainder of the school year.
And then Mr. Allen's amendment moved that strongly recommended language to the 10th.
Correct. Is there any more discussion on the amendment? A roll call vote on the amendment?
Greg Allen? Melissa Gleason? Diane Hansen? Roger Hout?
Yes.
Heidi Larson? Jason Rohr? Gail Nelson? Robert Toso? Aaron Roberts? Yes. Motion failed 7-2. Amendment, sorry. Amendment.
Now back to the original motion. Jason?
Point of clarification, was that vote 6 to 3 or 7 to 2?
Back to the original motion, any more discussion? Sally, roll call vote?
Melissa Gleason? Diane Hansen? Roger Hout?
Yes.
Heidi Larson? Jason Rohr? Gail Nelson? Robert Toso? Aaron Roberts? 5-4. Motion passed with 5-4.
Okay. If I can just ask for a two-minute recess to use the restroom. Okay. Okay.